Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Any citizens input, Deb?
No, there isn't, ma'am.
We have no recognition awards tonight. Subcommittee update, technology, Mr. Agia, please.
I wasn't at that meeting, so...
Is someone else going to give it to you? No, no.
Mr. Bailey's not here.
Oh, Bobby, alright. We'll hold on that till the next meeting.
Sure.
Sorry. Superintendent's report?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the hiring update for, since the last school committee meeting. We have hired eighty-seven folks, forty-nine of them are teachers, nine are administrative positions, fourteen paraprofessionals, seven educational support positions, and eight operational support positions. Conversely, we have had thirty-seven resignations and three retirements. I will say that principals have been working feverishly and recommendations for hire are coming in in record pace, so we're hoping that we're going to be on target in having our schools staffed appropriately for opening. Also, update on our conversion back to Aspen as of July fourteenth, and I will say we are in a good place and are actively moving to do what is needed to get ready for the August thirtieth opening. We have achieved some milestones after six weeks of daily work by both the Aspen conversion team and our Fall River Data Services team. We've been able to go live with our Aspen Student Information Center on June thirtieth. This included validating data after several sessions by reviewing what was in Power School. We've been able to, we've initialized Aspen single sign-on for our staff and students where the, use the Google credentials. We've completed the setup of the Aspen online student registration portal to accept new registrations. Aspen also trained PACE staff, and we're lucky to have our newest addition, Jen Hodges, to assist PACE as she did for her former district in the registration process. We began our summer training schedule for office and admin. In addition, our two newest employees are completing the Aspen System Administrator classes, and tech team members are creating and/or improving training videos for teachers and staff for our online library similar to what we did with Power School. And Parent Square has been set up to accept new students and contact data nightly, so it'll update every day. Also, to do, we still have, because of our conversion timeline, that was created so that staff had a student information system to use beginning July first. We agreed to push back the important, some data sets in Power School to be completed throughout the summer, and that's been ongoing. The health immunizations has been ongoing, transcripts with final grades has been ongoing, health condition screenings and visits is being added throughout the summer, and attendance, conduct, and student journals are also being imported throughout the summer. On the special education side, that is slated to go fully live no later than July twenty-fourth, although I did see an email this morning from Mr. Michael Azic and Ms. Obensheng, and they were saying July twenty-first looks like that's when they'll be going live. Aspen is having our special ed department review data being converted for accuracy in which they will communicate any issues to our special ed conversion lead. Training for our special ed staff is being planned for August during Teacher Institute and beginning of the school year, and our staff are able to write new IEPs in Aspen while the twenty-two twenty-three data is being converted. Health records are also being reviewed between Power School and Aspen so that any issues are addressed before the data is officially moved into Aspen. Sally Borges continues to be the health person for us that's overseeing that. We anticipate rolling over the school year and Aspen around August first, that's pretty usual, and schools will still need to work on completing their master and student schedules in Aspen, of which we're dedicating resources to schools to have them completed by August fifteenth. All in all, to say we've had a major conversion, everything is on track and in a very good place. That's all.
Any questions? Item number seven, we have five sets of minutes to approve. I'd like to read them and then ask for a motion a second on all of them. Approval of minutes from the Policy Subcommittee from five twenty-two twenty-three. Approval of minutes from the Special Education, Alternative Education, and Early Childhood Subcommittee Meeting from six-five. Approval of minutes from the Technology Subcommittee from six-six. Approval of minutes from the public hearing on six-twelve. And approval of minutes of the regular school committee meeting on six-twelve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Har? Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the approval of travel requests. We have none. Item number nine is an acceptance of donations. We have none for this meeting. Item number ten, as we usually do, I would respectfully ask the members if they have any of those contract items that they would like to discuss, please let me know and we'll pull them out and do them individually. If not, I will ask for a motion in a second.
General question.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
General question on all of them. Can someone please explain to me how they're broken up? And typically, we get a one pager that says each, like an explanation of each, but we only receive some of them, if I recall, but I was just trying to figure out, it was a request that I had made to say whether something's continual new. I just wanted, if somebody can get some clarity.
So, the contracts are broken up. The whole first section, with the exception of the last, I believe, five contracts are all renewals. The final five contracts are new.
So, I'm looking at the agenda, and maybe I am missing it, but approval of contracts starts off with, it says continuation?
Yep.
And then there's only two contracts on mine. And then it says grant contracts, which is another five, and then miscellaneous contracts are under that, and then special education.
Yeah, so we break them out by department. So, it's continuation for facilities, continuation for grants, continuation for miscellaneous, and continuations for sped. And then the new ones are the final five ones.
Okay.
So, Lakeshore Learning, Core Business, W Mason, Collaborative Ed Services, and Cindy Amroth, those are the five new contracts. All others on the list are continuations.
So, all like in page to the American reading, the one for textbooks and all that, you're saying those are just, we've already approved them, basically, that's?
Yes.
Going through?
Yep.
So, none of these are new?
The new ones are the final five.
Just that, all these other ones that we've already?
These are all renewals for what we had before, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further?
If we could, if we could hold the Collaborative for Ed Services, Special Ed, that's in the discussion items, and it was inadvertently also added here, so it's a discussion vote to approve, so if we could just, you know, exclude that one from the vote.
Alright, so we'll hold on Collaborative for Educational Services for seventeen thousand dollars, second from the bottom. Anything further? I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, just if I can make one request. A lot of these returns are for core, for printing. If, between now and the next meeting, if somebody could get to, I wonder if we're getting the best bang for our buck there, or are we just leasing so that, I'm sure you guys have analyzed it, but if we can get a one pager, I appreciate it. Thank you, I yield.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Har? Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Approval of grants, we only have a few. Does anybody have any questions on the grants? I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Motion made.
Second.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item twelve point one is an update and presentation, UAspire, as presented by Kendra Pimental, Derfi, RPS, UAspire Advisor, and Drew Woodward, Director of Guidance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight to highlight and share some information on the partnership between FRPS and UAspire. I know many of you know this, but for the edification of the public, UAspire is a national nonprofit that supports high school and college students to access financial aid and navigate post-secondary systems through in-person and virtual dedicated advising. Here in Fall River, we have a full-time onsite advisor that works with Derfi students and families to support their financial aid and financing college as well as aligning their educational goals with their finances. We've had many phenomenal UAspire advisors during my time here, and the current one is here with me today, Kendra Pimentel, and she's going to share a little bit more information about the partnership. You should have a two or three pager describing some of the highlights over the past of the year that she's going to go through now.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, my name is Kendra Pimental. Personal introduction, I am an alumni of Derfi High School and a product of the Fall River Public School System, and I'm currently finishing up my third year as Derfi's UAspire Advisor. So, as Drew mentioned, UAspire is a nonprofit organization with a specialized skillset in helping students navigate the ever-changing, ever-so-complicated financial aid process and helping them make affordable decisions for their post-secondary plans, so tackling the FAFSA, the CSS profile, and all of the intricacies in between, and building that one-on-one relationship with each individual student to help them with their individualized plans. And it's been a really great experience for me as their advisor. Specifically, I am part of UAspire's AFFORD program, which specializes in working with seniors in high school to help them make affordable choices, build a college list, and go over their options, explain the loans to them and their families, and just really help them make these educated decisions that will impact the rest of their adult lives. And as a first-generation college student myself, this is something that I think the community definitely benefits a lot from. It's a tricky conversation for students, staff, and parents alike. UAspire also offers a Succeed program, which has virtual advising for students who are in college and helps them matriculate through, throughout the rest of their bachelor's degree, and now has extended to four years, whereas before we only offered two years, so that is a really positive change that we have. And just to briefly capture some great highlights from this year, so we have advised three-hundred-and-fifty-seven high school seniors, specifically at Derfi, which our original goal was two-hundred-and-forty students, so we definitely exceeded that goal. We had about eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven in-person advising sessions. My office door almost broke off the hinges, which is great news. Ninety percent of student engagement over text message, which is great. A lot of virtual aspects of it, but a lot of in-person, since I'm here at Derfi Tuesday through Friday. Because of this individualized support, Derfi High School is actually coming in for fourth place with other large urban communities for FAFSA submission. As a lot of you may know, is that FAFSA submissions have been low on a national level, and I think having the support and keeping Derfi on top of the chart is really important. And overall, our advising impact, we have two-hundred-and-thirty FAFSAs completed this year. We had a hundred-and-four students go over their financial aid offer with me, and our partnerships have awarded students with over fifty thousand dollars in scholarships through the organizations that we partner with. And we have two-hundred-and-fifty-two Derfi alumni students who are currently being advised through our Succeed program. And on the next couple slides are just some very lovely text messages from some of our current students and our wonderful team that helps us make this all possible. Thank you very much.
Ms. Larvee?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just a couple of questions. At what grade level do you start engaging with the students?
So, at the end of the academic year, when seniors are wrapping up, towards like mid-April, early May, I will start to engage with juniors with presentations to teach them about the content and what it is exactly that I help them with. So, I would say late junior year is usually where I'll start that engagement.
Okay, so there's nothing before, there's nothing before that?
Unless people are real eager.
Okay. How many staff members with you at Derfi with the kids?
Staff members with UAspire?
Yes.
Just me.
Just you, so you worked with three-hundred-and-fifty-seven kids?
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting.
She was my student, that's how we trained.
That's how we train, right? We go big.
I did, I did.
Now, how do they, how does the communication start? Like, how do you, is it email, is it parent square, is it, because I did read about the text messaging, but can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Of course. It's a little bit everything. Majority is, at the end of the junior year, I do in-class presentations for every English class to capture all juniors, because that's the one class they all have on their schedule. From there, I have them all complete a virtual intake form that gets their cellphone number. So, usually by that, it's a really easy way to capture a student's cellphone number, and they have to consent to it, get parent consent. And then at the end of the summer is when I'll start to like text out students in a bulk message, and then I'll send bulk emails through a Fall River email, and then the first month of the advising curriculum is honestly just trying to catch any students who are still interested. The recruitment never ends, but I think that we catch the most of our students at the beginning of summer and like September portion of the school year.
Thank you. How much participation with the parents is part of this program? Do you require, I should say, or do you require?
We don't require parent participation, but we do get quite a lot of parent participation. I would say that most of my one-on-one interactions with students are just between them, but parents will email me, call me, they're more than welcome to be part of the meetings if they so desire. They know that they can absolutely always contact me with any questions they have, so it's not, it's not required, but they're welcomed.
Right. Thank you. I yield for now.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Madam Superintendent, can you tell me how much money this costs, and is this part of, is this just a general presentation, or is this a grant that we've already got, or?
This is a result of when these grants, these, all of these that we support came before the committee last, the month before, and I believe it was you had asked, could we have an update as we advocate for renewal to support again? And that's why we had Coaching for Change, we have UAspire, we gave you a spreadsheet of the things that they did and the recommendation to continue to renew each year. That's why, what our commitment is. Mr. Woodward, do you have what our commitment was for?
Yeah, the UAspire contract is fifty-five thousand per school year.
And where does that come from? Where has it come from before, and where does it come from now?
It comes out of the Derfi, Derfi budget, out of contracted services.
Just a general?
Yes.
I might be mixing up something, but years ago, is this the program where we got a grant at one point? Or like the chamber paid for something one year, and then it continued?
I don't, I don't remember how it all started, or when it started.
But it's basically, it's not, we're not getting a grant and using this as one of them.
No.
This program can't fit in any of the grants that we receive? For counseling, for any of that stuff?
Potentially, if we write it into any of our grants, yes.
It just, it seems to me like a good program, but it also makes me, when you look at the whole budget, what is it? You know, we've increased, for instance, we've increased guidance counselors, we've increased school adjustment counselors, and since this has been in existence. So, if you rewind back to prior to this program, counselors had to do all of these things. So, now this is a worthwhile program that's taken some of that burden off of some of the counselors, and I'm just trying to figure out how all that meshes together to say, I know the problems are more, and there's a lot of different things, but we've increased the numbers and we're taking away some of the work. That's, would be my only question. And my last question on it is, so Ms. Pimental works full-time at Derfi, are you at Derfi every day, is that when?
Yes, I'm at Derfi Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, throughout the entire academic year.
Okay, because in the contract, the contracts had to look, when you're, when the person is on-site, and I was wondering what that means to, I would assume you were on-site, but that made it seem like you weren't on-site all the time?
Yeah.
So, they can count on you for four days a week of, do you do anything else at the school other than what you explained?
Nope, that's what I do full-time, and I think the confusion is just because, since I work technically for UAspire, when there's vacation days at Derfi, I do remote work for UAspire.
I see, so we're paying them, and then they pay you. But I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Pereira?
I was asking, I was thinking, Mimi said you're the only one who's handling this. I have, I have two daughters in college right now. Like, I'm losing my mind personally. So, the fact that somebody's there, and I'm, you know, I consider myself an educated woman, I have a bachelor's degree, but it's not in financial aid. And I think sometimes, I know that part is still, I'm in the process of it for my youngest, and it's really daunting and sort of scary financially, right? And, and hard. And sometimes, I think, in a situation where maybe you're, maybe you've grown up in a situation that you haven't seen everybody go to college, and you're not used to this process, you may be hesitant then to go forward. So, having somebody like you, I think, is beyond important. I agree, it is something that guidance counselors used to do, but as we're spending more money on these things, I think that we also are doing so because we have a social-emotional need for our students, which I think what you're doing is something that's entirely, entirely different, which to me almost seems like more family engagement and family outreach in that way. So, I think this is fantastic, but my question after that rambling is, do you feel that after you capture as many students as you can to, you know, to sort of help navigate, you know, through this process, do you feel that every student, every scholar that's coming to you is getting served what they need, or do you think you're only one person, and it's difficult? Or does it seem like it's working, that you're, you're getting, getting help to the people that are coming for it?
Yeah, I would say that I do feel that I provide each student with the support they need, and if there is a part of their issue that I feel that I can't support them with, I'll always guide them to the right place. So, I think that if a student is ever asking me questions, like, I will absolutely go above and beyond to answer whatever they need, but I feel as though I, I can successfully do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, but Madam Superintendent, did you say all of those other ones got approved last meeting, or what?
No.
Only the ones that presented?
When they came, you asked for feedback for us to give you data and stuff.
I'm saying, have they all been approved?
We, I think that we made a recommendation, I shared on the Friday, what we were paying for each one, and the recommendation was, you had asked for whether we were recommending to renew, or whether we, I think there's one of them that we, that had gone, had stopped during COVID, and then we did not.
But my question is, when are we voting on all of them? Did we do that last month, or is it not?
I think that we'll bring them again, because at that time, we put it on hold.
I meant some placeholder?
Yes, we put it on hold.
So, I didn't miss that last month?
No, we're going to bring it, all of them together. We just wanted you guys to get the information.
I understand. Thank you.
Twelve-two is a discussion and vote to approve the Criminal Justice Protective Services Chapter Seventy-four Teacher CVTE Job Description, as presented by Cynthia Sylvia, CTE Director.
Can I ask a question while she's coming down?
Mr. Agia?
Was this in the budget, is that why it's now?
Yes, yes.
So, the line item?
The position was approved, and then we had to go back and create the job description.
Thank you.
So, basically, we're really excited, again, to continue to broaden the CTE program in a direction, I think, is very important for our students in the criminal justice and protective services. The first step in any Chapter Seventy-four, bringing a new program on, is a three-year process. The first year, we have to kind of see if there's interest, and that's where we are in this process. And the Criminal Justice Protective Services is fire police, hopefully to have them certified as an EMT, and possibly even get them ready for the FBI if that be a, a career pathway. So, I guess I'm here because we've already approved the position, and you've had time to overlook and see what the job description looks like. The job description for this instructor can be a firefighter, it can be a police officer, it can be a lawyer, it can be an EMT, it can be any one of those, but they have to work in the field. They can't just be somebody who really likes criminal justice, or who I majored in criminal justice, no. Just like every CTE program, they have to be what they teach. So, we have to be mindful when we have this search for this, for this teacher, that they are one of the things and one of the avenues. Although those particular career pathways are vast, you still have to be in those career pathways in order to teach it for so many years, depending on what that is. So, if anybody has any questions regarding the actual job description to search for this hire, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Agia?
And it means to be a teacher, certified teacher with DESI?
Correct. Or certifiable. Certifiable in CTE world means, they've been, say, we have a firefighter that's been a firefighter for twenty years. Now, DESI shows a pathway to certification, so there is a timeline, because we have to bring these people out of industry. So, there is a timeline DESI allows for us to make them certifiable and get them the teaching certification, because academic side, they learn how to be a teacher and take all their teacher classes, and then they have five years to get their masters. In CTE world, they have to be in industry, and then they have five years to get their ed courses. So, it's kind of like the reverse, academic versus CTE. So, they have to be certif, on a pathway to certify, to be able to be certified.
So, the first line says maintains a valid mast D E S E teacher certification that is appropriate to the grading level.
A lot of them have them already. There are criminal justice and protective services teachers who have that license, so it's possible.
I'm definitely in favor of it. Don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of it, but I just want to make sure when we approve in the job descriptions that we're not boxing ourselves into a corner. And if I read number one, what I just read about maintaining a license, it doesn't, to me, what you answered is not what this says, if I was to just give you my opinion.
Well, they could also apply for an emergency license, just like you could, any one of those, but usually in CTE, when it says maintains a valid DESI certification, it means that they have a val, because DESI certification isn't just the MEEPID or, or the teaching license, it's also the licensure in those fields. For instance, a CNA teacher needs to have a valid, DESI makes sure that they have the valid nursing license, they have to be an RN. So, that's all part of it. So, when we talk about licensure, the license that they talk about isn't always a teaching license, but it may be a professional license, like cosmetology.
Yeah, I understand. Madam Superintendent, do you have a thought on this?
We actually cleared it with both Principal Damaris and Ms. Sylvia, that I had the same question, because it says, the number one bullet says DESI license, and then the Chapter Seventy-four, and both agreed that that, those needed to be in the job description.
But if you look at how it's written, I don't see anywhere in here that what she just explained can happen. So, if I'm applying for this job, I need to maintain a valid, so to me, that means you have to have it, the way I'm reading this. It's not that you need a waiverable within five years, like the, it doesn't, to me, it means maintain, means you actually have to have it in order to maintain it. I think that if you look at the letter of the, where this is written, what I think you're trying to do is say they need to be either, it's either a waiver, or be certifiable, or some other, I'm not the one that's going to do the hiring, and I don't work in HR.
A valid pathway to licensure?
Well, we could say is able to maintain, is able to acquire a mast DESI teacher certification.
That might be a good one.
I mean, I'm not involved in HR.
I mean, look at eight, look at bullet eight. They could say something like that, you know what I mean? Hold or be able to, I agree with Kevin.
I see that as a different thing, so.
Right. But if we use that same wording?
Yeah.
For the first one, to say to either hold and maintain, or, sorry to interrupt you.
Maybe have it not be redundant, so eight becomes one. Maybe have it not be redundant, so eight becomes one and get rid of eight?
No, I don't think get rid of eight, sorry.
Just use the same language.
Same language?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that at all. Great point.
Yeah, I'm just saying the language.
It would back us into a corner, Mr. Agia, it would.
Well, I think you just, this is gonna be, first of all, whatever you try to find a teacher who's also a police officer, teacher who's also a nurse, I mean, good luck to begin with. I mean, it's hard, we're gonna do it, but this isn't easy. So if I read, I agree with Kevin, you read this first line, I go, oh, I don't have a teacher certification, I guess I don't qualify, not knowing, maybe I could-
Sure.
Anything else? I, I do think this is a very important program for the city of Fall Overland, for Massachusetts. I know we looked at some other cities and towns that were doing it, and I think this is gonna be very positive for us, for helping in our recruitment of police, firemen, anything else? Ms. Larvee, go ahead.
The initial, the initial interest thus far is, we had 120 students choose it as a first choice, and just under 200 as an alternate choice.
Good.
So we're in good shape with people who, students that are interested. That's the first big step to getting us toward a full-blown program.
Ms. Larvee?
So you answered my question, and I was very close to what Mr. Agia was going to, was, was speaking of, but I was just wanting to comment on a sense of humor. Is it sarcastic? Is it funny?
You need a sense of humor whenever you're dealing with kids, whenever you're dealing with staff, you need to smile. You need to smile and-
And see in that.
They need to be warm, and, and you know what? That is important. That is important.
It's very important.
It's important to our programs, it's what, it's what keeps our kids engaged. So I think that being the right fit for a program is definitely important.
Kudos to you for putting that in there. I agree with you. I yield.
Could I, Mr. Agia?
So the other piece, once again, I don't work for HR, but I think we need to tighten up some of our language when we use these. Every other position that I've ever approved in my years here has always said, and any other duties that the principal or director would want them to do are something along those lines, and I don't see that here. So my question is, why and who vetted it?
Yeah, we'd have to check the FREA contract. I know that we have that in administrators' job descriptions, but I'd have to check the FREA to see if that's in there.
I don't believe it says that in FREA.
If it is, we will add it. But I don't know that it's an FREA, Mr. Agia, I can't tell you.
I don't think that's in the teacher's contract, Kev, it's in the administrators.
Right, but we, we also need to have some flexibility for, when she's running a program, that she needs to be able to, some of the things and, and responsibilities, yeah, you have to teach a class, those are prescriptive to how many, you gotta follow the contract, I get that. But there's also things when you're trying to create a program from scratch, that you need some flexibility, in my opinion. So, once again, the way this is written potentially could bind you, because if we don't put something in it to say that you might say, based on need, this, that, whatever, follow the contract, but you still need some flexibility. You have none, as the way that I see it. You know.
I'm, I'm not really privy to the teacher's contract, if that's a part of it or not. So none of the, none of the job descriptions that I'm, that I'm affiliated with gives me any kind of flexibility like that.
Yeah.
But, but thank you.
I think you need, I think you need some. So I'll make a motion to approve with the superintendent's changed language related to item number one.
Second.
Let's vote on the amendment first. Deb?
Wait, I couldn't hear what you said, I couldn't, I'm sorry.
It was just the change-
Sometimes the sound doesn't travel well if it's not-
It was the change to the description of maintain, yes. That's the one we're amending. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Now voting on the Criminal Justice Protective Services teacher.
I just make a comment, I don't know if it makes-
Ms. Pereira.
Sorry, I don't know if this makes a big difference, I don't want to be nitpicky, but under responsibilities, number five, it says response, it says under responsibilities, which I assume would mean, would mean the role of my job, duties of my job, my responsibilities. And it says a history of successfully teaching diverse student population, yada, yada. Should that be under qualifications, not responsibilities? It seems to be more of a qualification. Or maybe it should read-
That's a good point.
Responsibility, will be teaching adverse. Does anybody follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like responsibility, it seems like a qualification.
Or you can reword it.
Or reword it and make it a responsibility, either or. Yeah. Anyway, that's my two cents on that. But that I yield.
I have one other question, too.
Ms., Ms. Rodericks?
So you mentioned that they also need to have their professional license, right? But I don't see that anywhere in here, so does that?
Um, that, that is, I don't think that, you can't specify their professional license, because if it's an EMT, it's gonna be a certain license. If it's a, if it's a firefighter, it's a different certification. There may be all different certifications. We may have somebody who is gonna be able to go in there and is a, you know, because DESI has a broad range of protective services pathways to list all of the licensures that could be held for them to hold that position. I think that we just leave that into DESI and say, let DESI have that certification vetting process, if you will, because sometimes we could say, okay, needs to have a valid firefighter's license, or, or some other license. And DESI would say, or you can have this license, this license, or that license, to also. So I'm, I'm not so sure if we wanna, we wanna articulate that, because I think that it will already come out when they apply for their license with the Department of Education.
I'm just trying to think through that, because I would hate for somebody to go through the process and then go to apply for their license through DESI, right, and then find out, oh, wait, this doesn't qualify for this.
Well, hopefully, they've already, they've already investigated that. I find that quite a bit in CTE, that when I meet with them in an interview, I say, if they are not DESI certified, have you discussed, have you gone through the DESI process to see what it takes for certification? As soon as that answer is no by a candidate, I have on the ready what DESI requires, and I share that with them. But ultimately, it is their job as the applicant to investigate, just like an English teacher would investigate what it takes to be an English teacher, or a math teacher, a math teacher, you know. So I, I don't think that, I don't think that that's something I, I don't foresee an issue putting it in the job description, but we can, I mean, it just limits it.
I'm just trying to think through it. So does, so based on that, what we're saying is that number one then already absorbs that?
I believe so, yeah. One and a-
Is that how everyone's reading?
Both of them. The, the first one and the last.
Go ahead, I'm still trying to think about-
Mr. Agia.
So, like I said before, I don't work in HR, but we certainly, in my opinion, can do better when we present something like this. I think the, the problem, the way I look at it is if somebody comes to you for an interview, and they don't have a license, and they say, just to follow what you were just saying, and they say, yes, I'm aware of it and I'm gonna get it. I think that we need to play, we, meaning the district, needs to play a more import, a more clear role in what does that mean. So if I'm the candidate and I come in, yeah, I know what it means. That might mean that I have to take two classes a year, or whatever the, the rules are, that somebody internal here has to hold them accountable to, are they meeting that, and are they continuing to be on that path?
That, that's typically, typically me, because I see the certifications and what their pathways are, and sometimes there is no pathway to certification. For instance, if I have, we have an engineering teacher that, that we're, that we have posting for. If somebody comes out of UMass Dartmouth with a master's degree in engineering, they are, unless they've been in the field of engineering, they cannot get a license. So they're not certifiable. I know that, because I've done my homework, and when I meet with these candidates, I share with them what their pathways to certification are in CTE. That's part of my job when I interview them. When we just had a cosmetology interview today, that, we have a candidate who says, oh, well, I work for Rob Roy, and I, I have my cosmetology instructor's license. Okay, great, that's one of three steps that you need to get certified. Here are the other steps. And the state usually grants one year for them to get that in, in place when they come on the industry.
I think, just knowing what I've known of you, watching you come in, you're thorough and you get, you understand. What I think happened is you answered a question, I think you didn't explain that, like that you, it was like you were putting it on, and I think that you were gonna be on it to make sure that they're doing it, otherwise you wouldn't be hiring them. So it was just the words that came out when Ms. Roderick was asking the question, that seemed like it's on them, and really, you're gonna take, you're on them, and I do think you do a good job, and I think you're gonna get it straightened out if they-
I absolut, I absolutely have to stay aligned, especially if we hire them, but, but also, they as applicants also are applying for a teaching job here at Durfee High School, and they need to know what they're applying for. And so if they haven't done their homework, and I've had people say, well, I'm, I'm a stylist at such and such salon, have you ever gone to the DESI website? No. That, to me, is problematic, that you're applying for a teaching job and you know nothing about going into teaching. So I think it's a mix of them being responsible as coming here, not as a stylist or as an engineer, but as a teacher, same as the academic side would do, that they would also do their due diligence to find out what it's like, what it is to get their teaching license. I help guide their way in the right direction and show them exactly what they need to do. And then, if we find them in the pathway that they are going to be a good hire, then I would, if we did that and gave them that one year, then absolutely, I become that mentor who was gonna guide them through the process. But eventually, they have to get through the process. They have to go out and do the work.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. You do a great job, so I have no, no worries. Thank you, I yield.
I need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended, um-
The amended-
Job description. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Item 12.3 is a discussion and vote to approve card access projects in the district as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion, or do we want to let Scott tell us what we're doing? Scott, give it a rip, give us a summary of what this is about.
So this is just gonna be a continuation of the card access that we've been doing across the district. There are two pieces to this approval, one being Watson, where we're gonna add card access, which is already in the building from the updates that we've been doing there. However, that's gonna be an update to the elevator cab, so that we can keep students out of the elevator cab during the day. And then the second, I guess you could call change order, is when we came to the committee back in October, we began the installation of the new cameras at the Morton Middle School. At that time, it was my professional opinion that we could save the external cameras. However, as the vendors began to replace those cameras internally in the building, we noticed that just the age of the cameras and some of the wiring, we needed to go ahead and replace the remaining exterior cameras. So that was the change order on the Morton side. Everything else is just gonna be pushing forward to get all of the buildings under the same system. And then we'll have a couple of buildings left that Mr. Pacico and I are waiting for the majority of the construction projects at Henry Lord, and then also at RPA to finish, and then we'll be adding those buildings to the same system as well in the future.
Any questions for Mr. Cabral, Ms. Pereira?
I just have, it's like clarification. So I watched the meeting, excuse me, and just if you could clarify one part, when, when you were discussing some of the elevators, we are not gonna be able to ever use a card, and then there are some that will be able to move over once that, that takes place. So I don't know if this is a question for you or for Kenny or whatever, but just to, just to clarify, the ones, whether we're having got to be able to use the card, or we're never gonna be able to use the card because unless we upgrade the elevator or whatever, how are those used? Like, tell me what prevents kids from getting in those now?
So-
Like, by, by basically, my question is, I want to make sure a kid can't just walk over and press a button and get into an elevator. So if I watched that meeting as a parent, I would have been a little confused, so I just wanted to clarify that. Does that make sense, Kenny, what I'm asking? Go ahead, Scott.
I couldn't really hear you.
Huh?
I couldn't really hear you.
Oh, sorry. No, it's like a weird-
I know, it's really hard.
I can, I can, I can just give an overview for you guys. So-
Okay.
There are some, there are some elevator cabs that are in the district that, right now, you can just walk up to, push the button, and, you know, it'll call the elevator. What our plan there is, we're not gonna be able to put card access inside of those elevator cabs because of the equipment in those elevator cabs, but we are looking at, and actually, after our Technology Subcommittee meeting, I contacted ENE, who's been our frontrunner in this project, and we are looking at the possibilities of putting card access readers on the outside of the elevator cabs, so staff members and/or nurse could call the cab to the floor externally and not in the cab. Currently, in Durfee, the new Durfee, and at Morton, there are card readers in the cabs. That will not be the case at a Fonsica and some of the other buildings. We'll be putting those card readers externally before they hit the button to call the cab, they would have to swipe their card.
That was new, that was after, that was post-meeting, okay.
Correct, that was-
Cool.
Yes, we had some, we had some concerns at that meeting and did a little bit of research.
Awesome.
And that's gonna be the plan moving forward.
Scott, you're like reading my mind.
Anything further for Scott? Mr. Agia?
The, are there cameras inside the elevators, or outside?
So right now, in most of the buildings, there are cameras outside of the elevators. The, currently, the only building that has them inside of the elevator, and this is new for us in the district, is Durfee High School. It's something that we are talking about doing, and that's something that we're gonna have to get the elevator company involved with as well, because anytime that we look to add technology in an elevator cab, we have to bring in the elevator company, because we're not even allowed in that elevator machine room. So it's something that we're discussing with ENE and trying to figure out best practice and best way to install them moving forward.
Well, I think the, when you look at the cost, the cost of the card reader outside is gonna be less cost, more costly than actually doing the inside. So it's something to look at. I, I don't think we need both, personally, so if you ask me, I would think the camera inside is more important than putting the card reader outside. But if you have the money to do it, then I think we should either do it or do both. But did, can you repeat again about Morton? Morton didn't have one, or you thought you could use them, and then it's obsolete, or was it broken, or was-
No, so what, so what happened at Morton was, we came to you guys at a Facility Subcommittee meeting and requested to, you know, to do the camera changeout. And at that time, in speaking with the vendor, and then myself, just doing this for the amount of time that I have, I thought that we were gonna be able to save those external cameras. Those external cameras there are actually fed via fiber optic back into the building. And then when we started to change out the cameras and just looked at the sheer difference in resolution from the internal cameras to the outside external cameras, it was night and day, and there were a number of those cameras outside that kept failing. So it made technological sense and fiscal sense to just replace the remaining cameras outside, so that it was all under that one umbrella, and that that building was covered inside and outside with that one system, with new warranted cameras and replacement of wiring on some of those external parking lot poles where the old Carroll School was.
Yep. And the only other request I were making, it's not August 1st yet, but at the Tech Subcommittee, we had talked about having an update to the whole committee on all the projects and where they're at, just so we can periodically get over the summer where things are going. So just a reminder, that's all.
I'm actually in the creation of a, a kind of a live ticker, as you will, it'll be shared out via Google Site. I'm due back in Massachusetts next week, and then we will share it out to the committee, so that you can see real-time where we are with the projects.
Great, thank you. I yield.
Any further? So I need a, a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on 12.3. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve the Chromebook purchase as referred by the Technology Subcommittee.
Motion approved, 12.4 and 12.5 together.
Seconded.
I have a motion. Any discussion on 12-4, 12-5? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yes. 12.6, and this is a discussion and vote to approve 2501 South Main Street as referred by the Technology Subcommittee.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on 12.6, the 2501 South Main Street. Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just, I always like to just say what it is, and I know this is the technology for the new building that we purchased, so for the edification of the public, that's all it is.
That we're leasing. That we're leasing.
We're leasing, correct.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms.-
That we're leasing. That we're leasing.
We're leasing, correct.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.7 is a discussion and vote to approve the conversion of a data technician to a data specialist as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer. Do I have a motion and a second on that?
A motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Mr. Cabral still here?
Yes.
Here and none? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.8 is discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of the Director of Nursing for the Fall River School Department.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Mary Gustav is the superintendent's choice.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Ms. Mary Gustav? Mr. Agia?
The, I just don't know if this is a technical thing. Do we have an interview or anything like, I know a lot of times it's awkward because we do, no, we.
Oh.
You know, when they come before the school committee, like, that's why this is here? I trust what you interviewed and you recommended her, but I think explaining why might help us to just go with it and.
Yep, absolutely. So it's the Assistant Superintendent, superintendents that come for a public interview, but as you know, that in your purview, you also approve the appointment of attendance officers as well as nurses. Nurse Gustav has been with us for quite some time. We had an interview panel. Nurse Long was actually part of the team. We interviewed several candidates. Nurse Gustav has actually been working alongside Nurse Long for quite some time and really even covered for her while she was on leave. She is extremely qualified as, has a calm nature, and we have every confidence that she will lead the district in the next leg of her, of this journey. Certainly, we are thankful for Nurse Long and it's, you know, heart shoots to fill, but I think Nurse Gustav is ready to do that.
Any further discussion on Nurse Gustav?
Motion to approve. There's a motion already in.
There's a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.9 is a discussion and vote to approve the request for additional special education positions at 2501 South Main Street as presented by Kristen Farius, Early Childhood Director. Come on up, Kristen. Tell us what you're looking for, please.
So the positions you have before you are positions in, for special education services that will be needed for students that will be attending 2501 South Main Street. And then we'll also service students, some of these positions will also service students that are attending at the Early Learning Center at the leased building at St. Anthony's. Those children were serviced this past school year. We were able to pull staff from other places to cover them. We did not know initially what full enrollment would look like. We started with five classrooms. We expanded to seven classrooms, and we only recently have finalized which classrooms for preschool will be at 2501 South Main Street. So that's why these positions are coming before you now. So the speech and language therapy assistants, as well as the occupational therapy assistants, will solely be servicing children at 2501 South Main Street. The SLP and the OTA will be supervising staff both at Early Learning Center and at 2501 South Main Street. The team chair and school psychologist will also be servicing students at both sites.
Are there any questions of Ms. Farius? Mr. Agia?
I just, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question from Ms. Obenchain. So my only question is on all of the, and I think I know the answer to this already that you work together with, come up with these numbers, but a lot of these positions are under your supervision as Assistant Superintendent. Are they, is this all that's needed in order to service the children in there in your opinion?
Based on the numbers that we have now, yes. Kristen's done a fantastic job of making everything very clear for me, and same thing with our SLP lead and our OT lead. So yes, whether or not what's coming down the road from early intervention or move-ins, this gives us a little bit of wiggle room. It's not like anybody will be maxed out with the current additions. There's a little bit of a buffer.
The reason I ask is some of the, the positions that are here also exist across your entire department. So are these going to be equal in caseloads? And if they're not, then you have the authority to shift around?
Right, absolutely. And we always work together on that.
And you're comfortable with these numbers?
I am comfortable with those.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anything further? I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Seconded.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.10 is a discussion and vote to approve an adjustment to the Early Childhood Grant Coordinator's position as presented by Kristen Farius, Early Childhood Director.
My bad.
So the grant coordinator originally came before you as a part-time position specific to the Commonwealth, the partnership grant to expand early childhood. That is a position that is required under that grant. Based on the number of partners we had, it was only a part-time position. We have been unable to fill that position as a part-time position. This year, moving into next school year, we re-entered a competitive cycle for the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. And so as part of that competitive grant, I did write into that grant an additional half-time grant coordinator position that will assist in similar responsibilities to the coordinated, to the partnership grant around grant oversight. Some of the fiscal piece, they will do alongside me, but will also now service the CFCE grant as well, which gave us the ability to make that a full-time position and hopefully make it more attractive to be able to fill it.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.11 is a discussion and vote to approve the Professional Development Series for Team Chairs as presented by Lori Obenchain, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
So I was approached by a few of our team chairs about attending this Professional Development Institute. So when I looked into this, I have sent team chairs to this before. I have participated in different leadership academies through these types of collaboratives. We've gotten positive feedback from our team chairs who have already gone. The problem is it requires them to be out of the district for long periods of time, multiple days throughout the school year, and it's a far commute for them. So I looked into the ability, let me back up, and we're hiring new team chairs. So we're going to end up with about 21 team chairs, some of which have gone through this institute previously, but they would love to have them come on board and continue the work. Again, things change in special ed all the time, and also to mentor the new, the new team chairs as they're going through this institute. So instead of trying to figure out how to send 21 different people out, it was beneficial for me to reach out and see if I could bring them to us. And they're willing to do that. So I think this is what we need to do. We promised the team chairs, again, when we're doing professional development of our staff, we want to grow our own. I want them to be confident in their role and their knowledge of special education. So bringing this institute to them also allows three of them to be part of a job alike throughout the state where they can have monthly virtual meetings with other team chairs, discuss issues that we're having in Fall River, get some ideas, and bring that back. That's all included in this institute.
Motion approved with a question?
I got a motion and a second. Mr. Agia, since you made the motion, you go first, and Ms. LaRavi.
The, some of the days are, it looks like the school day?
I'm sorry, can you say one more time?
They're, they're actually during school. Is that what?
Yep, yep.
And is there any time out of school, like, and?
There's some virtual requirements, and there'll be assignments in between.
So are they, if they're extra, they get paid extra and it's in the number in the?
We'd have to, I'd have to look at the contract to see how that works, but they also would have, I mean, their day, they can schedule their day. So to me, this is preparation, like, if I was preparing for a meeting, I can be preparing my assignment. A lot of it is the hands-on stuff that they're doing every day that can be utilized.
Yeah, just, I looked at some of them, they were during the day, and that just takes them away from the duties.
Yes, but they're not having to drive to Danvers where a lot of these things occur, right? So if we give them the schedule ahead of time, and that way they can plan their meetings around these, these institute days.
And we added some team chairs, so the caseloads are lower, so this could probably happen.
Yes, yes. The case, if we can, when all the team chair positions are fill, I think, filled, I think we have two left, one or two left. We, the caseloads will be, yes, around between 130 and 160, which is much different than the over 200 right now.
Great. Thank you very much.
Ms. LaRavi?
So you mentioned three out of the 21 team chairs have an opportunity to take part in what? Can you repeat that?
Oh, it's called, it's a job alike, so it's basically a virtual meeting of different team chairs around the Commonwealth. And they can discuss like problems of practice. They can discuss, you know, successes that they've had, kind of share information. Normally, that's an additional cost, and we've had some team chairs request for me to allow them to participate in this job alike. I was able to work it out with the group that they're going to give us three seats in this job alike. Like, there'll be one for secondary, there'll be another one for elementary, those types of things. They're going to give us the three seats included in this rate.
Okay. Thank you. I understand now. Thank you.
Ms. Pereira?
I just had a quick question. So when you're saying they come to us, and, so are these trainings, everyone is going to be doing the same training the same day?
Yes, onsite.
Okay, so instead of them basically all going an hour away for two days, they'll be here doing.
And they used, they have our professional development calendar already, so they're going to use as many of those days as they can.
Right, right.
Those types of things.
Thank you.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.12 is a discussion and vote to approve responsive classroom as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent.
So as Dr. Braunhardt was not able to be with us tonight, she had been researching ways on how to support classroom teachers, and one of the things, we, we had been a responsive classroom district in the past. After COVID, the trainings lessened and, you know, things changed. We are trying to get ourselves back on track as, in regards to being a responsive classroom district. It's focused on relationship building, building those positive cultures, common language conditions for students to learn and thrive academically, socially, emotionally. It's very hard to get, this is an intensive training, four-day training, eight hours per day. Dr. Braunhardt is, got the company to actually do the training in the summer for our staff. We have the potential to have four cohorts, two elementary and two middle school, of middle school teachers who are going to take advantage of this training. Our goal is to have common language, common expectations, a common approach to this, you know, to, to teaching as well as to discipline throughout the district.
Any questions? Ms. Rodericks?
So we, we do a lot of investing in different approaches, right, to, to teaching and to try to get the whole district on board with things. So how are we going to make sure that this actually gets implemented and that folks are actually using the tools that they're, because this is a big investment.
Oh, it's a huge investment.
And responsive classroom is wonderful, right? They typically do their trainings in the summer, they get everybody up and running, and so that way that, then they can start the school year with this practice in mind. But how are we going to make sure that this can actually happen?
Yep, that's a very valid question. We actually, we did responsive classroom at Dorn when it was part of our turnaround practice. I think that part of this is that Dr. B. already took a team, developed an SEL team that has representation from every school. One of the things that will happen will be that we will have RC walks where people will go into, you know, go into buildings or even school staff. We used to do that periodically, monthly, RC walks where we would go in, support, give feedback to teachers, and it's a way for us to adjust our practice before it gets to the end of the year and say, "No, that didn't work." Yeah, it's a huge investment, but it's a worthwhile investment, and I think that we need, we need to have the right systems in place to support that. And we are creating teams at each school so that they can support that.
Okay, so at each school, we'll have a group of folks, hopefully not just one person, but a small group of people that will be able to troubleshoot and, you know, model and do the pieces that are necessary for that piece. Because it's a great program.
I could not agree more. Each school has SEL teams, but what Dr. B. did was took, if you recall, the last time the school committee approved, they all went to a conference in Atlanta. One administrator from each building, not necessarily the SAC, right, an administrator from each building who was going to be the lead person and mobilize that team, but there needs to be some, you know, buy-in from everybody in the building. It only works if it's school-wide, district-wide, where everybody's talking the same language, doing the same work.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check on that because we pull different pieces and every school sort of does their own thing, but if we're going to have this whole district approach, which we've needed for a long time, but if we're going to have a whole district approach, we have to have those systems in place to make sure that they actually, you know, are followed through on.
Absolutely.
With that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
The only, I, I think it's a good investment. The concern that I have is the comment in there that it said, because of COVID, we stopped it, and I just don't necessarily agree with, with that, but maybe.
But the way we taught, you know, the, the virtual, the hybrid trainings changed the way, not everybody was doing all the trainings that they used to do. And we had to, everybody had to pick back up. So I don't want to say we stopped it, I just think there wasn't as much of a focus on it. And it wasn't adhered to as strictly as it should be, so, you know.
Yeah, I was just reading, the line says, "We have not contracted with them since prior to COVID."
That is true.
That's all I was suggesting is that if we contracted with them, that would therefore, we would have implemented better, in my opinion. So whenever we made the decision to stop contracting with somebody, we probably did ourselves a disservice, but, thank you, I yield.
Yeah, we need a motion in a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Cugan?
Yes. 1213 is a discussion and vote to approve the fourth quarter budget transfer as presented by Kevin Almeida, our Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Almeida?
So you have in front of you, this is our end-of-year cleanup. This is the final transfer, moving funds between cost centers. This year was the first year we did the cost center method. And as you can see, we've moved, you know, several dollars around to different, different areas. Couple of things to note, this transfer takes care of the funding of a down payment on 2501 South Main Street for $3 million. It takes care of the final phase of the Fields project here at Durfee High School, which is about a million and a half that it's projected to be. And it takes care of just odds and end miscellaneous other items that happen over the course of the year.
Any discussions on the transfers? Mr. Agia?
They're, they're quite extensive. I do appreciate the cost center, the, the approach that we went through. I think it was a new thing this year, but I do think it, it created at least a little better oversight by the committee. The one that I'm having a hard time understanding is the $3 million down payment. And I'm wondering if this is the first we're hearing of it as school committee? Or did I miss it?
Well, we, when we did the, when we did do the agreement, I, I had planned all along to keep the money here so that we could put a down payment on, on the building.
So, my question was, did we hear, is this the first time I'm hearing of it? Not today, meaning this document. Because that's an extensive amount. And what it's leading me to is the quarterly transfers. If we knew we had 3 million, I've never known that we had that much money in that particular cost center for the first three quarters. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got you.
And I think that that's one that's given me a little bit of heartache.
The, so just so you know, the last quarterly report that I provided to you, that was the first one that we did that showed, and you wanted us, you, and I've never done it. You wanted me to project out what we were going to have through the end of the year. And at that time, it was just over $5 million is what I projected to have. And so the plan all along was to start the process of paying down this building.
Yeah, I don't think you're doing anything, I don't think you're hiding anything, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I just, moving forward as we go, if we have that much money in a cost center, we could have made this particular transfer in May, in, in my opinion, rather than the later on. So I wonder if we know, okay, there's 3 million, there's 5 million, then we would have a, the school committee would have the bite at the apple to say, yes, we think that, and we could have made that change. Like a few months ago would be the way that I, and maybe you could just summarize, I, I did try to read here. Where did that money come from?
Pretty, pretty, I hate to say it, but it's pretty much everywhere. And most of it is caused by just salary savings because we had so many open positions over the course of the year. And between that and the contracting with the, the different agencies and the difference in money spent between what we would have spent in salaries versus what we spent there.
But in the facilities and operations silo, that's, there was 5 million?
No, 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 I had to, I had to shift the 5 million into facilities to cover, to cover that.
Okay, I was, when I was reading it, I was, it, it read to me quickly like we had that much money in just facilities.
No, 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 no. It's literally 200,000 in one area, 900,000 in another area, 800,000 in another area. And the problem is, is I, I appreciate, you know, the comments, but, you know, it's hard to say in the third quarter that I'm going to take X amount of dollars, you know, from a certain area, if, just in case something happens afterwards. So it's, while I would, I would prefer to do what you're, you're saying and move money, you know, all the way, all, all around the year, so many different things happen over the course of the year that, you know, makes it hard to do it that way.
I, I totally understand that. And I think that, when I was pushing for that as a school committee member, because part of our job is oversight and with the budget and, and all that. So I do appreciate yourself and the superintendent changing that to do that. What I would suggest is that we meet in the middle somewhere that there was, there's no doubt in my mind that we could have transferred a lot more in that third quarter and still giving you a cushion in case something happened, that would be my take.
Absolutely.
So I think meeting together would be, like, we wouldn't have this big number, we might add half a number. That would be the only, because we, if we don't know, we can't say we think this should be the priority or that should be the priority. So I do appreciate your work, thank you, I yield.
You got it, thank you.
Any further discussion on the transfer? I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve, second.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart? Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Cugan?
Yes. 1214 is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report presented by Kevin Almeida.
So this is, this is just the, where we stood prior to the transfer. I've provided you with an update on all the EISA grants and where we stand as of June 30th. In addition, I've given you the healthcare information. As you can see, it is quite, quite high in what we have left there. So, you know, originally when I provided you with the information back the first time around, I believe it was about $3 million. But it's looking like it could be more, like $4 million with the year-end wrapping up here. So when I file the end-of-year report, we will be getting more money. And there'll, there'll be more money coming down the road after the report is filed to the tune of probably about $4 million, so.
Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Can you please repeat what you just said about, in a, in a clear way, what's, what is the issue with the healthcare?
So the insurance, the insurance is budgeted higher than what we needed for this year. And we, with that, I give you, I provide the analysis every quarter as to what, you know, I, I think it's going to be as the year goes on. And the number has gone from 3 million that I'd originally provided, provided back in, I believe it was the first time was in January, I believe, to now where it's at about 4.3 million dollars.
And that 4.3 million is what the city's going to owe us to meet in that school spending?
Yes, sir.
And those conversations have been had with the city?
They, oh yeah.
Regularly?
We talked, we talked to them back when the 3 million started and they, and they're well aware of it, they're well aware of it.
Yep, the only thing I would ask is that this continues to be an issue every year? And I'm going to say the same thing in October, then I'm going to say the same thing in November, then I'm going to say the same thing in December. We could avoid all that conversation if we worked ahead of time and said, we know we're going to owe four, maybe we know for sure it's three, let's do the three early so this committee can actually make a decision on what to spend it for and leave the 1 million to chance. I'm just saying that again, and I'm going to say it every month, I promise you, I guarantee I'll say that every month. The, um,
Understood.
This sheet, the one that has the across, this is updated to the new budget?
No, not, that, this is just for FY '23. I kept it that way only because that we're still in FY '23.
And we're going to get one that, we're going to get one that's
Moving forward, you're looking at.
The only request I would make is that it gets sent out as soon as you have it?
Sure.
Just so that we don't have to wait for the next monthly meeting to determine it, thank you, I yield.
I need a motion in a second.
Motion approved, second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart? Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Cugan?
Yes. 1215 is a discussion and vote to approve a five-year contract with Whaling City Transit of Westport for special education school bus service as presented by me, Chairman of the School Committee, and Richard LeBree, Alliance Educational Associates. Mr. LeBree?
Thank you. I believe you have in your packet a, a project report that we submitted. It outlines the background for the project, of, project being electrification of school buses in Fall River, as well as the, the budget and the, the status of the, the project to date. The reason we're here this evening is that in order to take advantage of both the EPA and the CEC grant, both the city and the contractor that was chosen need to make a five-year commitment to running the buses. And we're at the point now where we're ready to install chargers at the location. And in order to do that, we don't want to install, spend a million dollars of, of grant money to install chargers and make the infrastructure improvements because there's only a year, about a year and a half, year and three quarters left on the current contract. So we're asking to extend that contract for five years. Mass General Law, Chapter 30B allows it because it's a special ed transportation as opposed to regular transportation which has to be bid. And so the timing is that we'd like to get these things installed this summer and continue to move the project ahead. The other reason that we're here now is that Phase 2 of the EPA grant application is open in August. And the city has indicated that they would like to continue to move ahead with electrifying buses. And so we're in a pipeline for an additional 15 buses, which if we're successful would be awarded in November and would extend the project into, into next year. And so the timeline is such that we're looking to extend the contract now so that both the city and the contractor can meet their, their commitment under both EPA and CEC. You'll also see a project timeline which shows the work plan for fully electrifying school buses and vans over the next several years. Our premise is that if EPA accepts this work plan, they're somewhat committed to funding us over that period of time. And we would be implementing somewhere between 15 and 20 buses each year with an influx of about, between 5 and 8 million dollars of federal money each year to support it. This project is literally cost-free to the city. The EPA and the CEC grant cover both the full cost of all of the buses as well as the full cost of all of the chargers, as well as the full cost of all of the infrastructure and installation costs. And it's an opportunity for the city to improve air quality, especially in the inner city. And we chose to partner with Whaling City because they serve in-district special ed transportation. And as you know, air quality is a big issue in the city as well as water quality. Fall River remains a priority city for funding by both CEC and EPA. And as such, we feel that we're serving the best interests of the students with handicapping conditions as a priority for service under the, under the, the project.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. LeBree? Mr. Agia?
So I've been asking questions about this for almost a year. And this committee has received basically no information about how this process was going, other than we were going to get a grant. And at the time, I said many times, this is something that we vote on the contract for transportation, we should be part of the process to know what's happening. And it's none of our business, is what I was told, multiple times. The fact that this is here before us now, asking for a five-year extension on a bus contract that's a no-bid contract? I think we should, you should have a say. And that's the unfortunate piece of this, is that it sounds, it all sounds so great, sounds good, yeah, whatever. We've taken every issue that we have that's complicated, send it to a subcommittee, let them work through it so we can actually see what is in there, what's not. The subcommittee members can ask certain questions. And we can get to a point where we're going to make a decision at a full meeting with some information. This is the first piece of stuff that we've received related to this. Now, I have a whole slew of questions. Mr. LeBree, you don't even, you're a consultant, right?
Yes.
So you work for the city?
For the city.
How much do the, what is your contract?
What is, what is?
How much money is your contract as part of this?
$50,000.
And then it ends when?
I'm sorry.
Is there any requirements?
There's a scope of work that the, that the city approved, when they approved the contract.
And once we approve this, it's over? So he would mention, we're going to have another five years, we're going to have another grant, we're going to, are you, is your contract 50,000 more? When does your contract of 50,000 end, sir? That's, I guess.
June 30th. We have not signed a new contract with the, with the city yet for the following, for the, this coming school, uh, school year.
So the 50,000 ended June 30th?
Correct.
And it's now Ju- July 18th?
Correct.
And you're working for nothing now? You don't have a contract right now?
I do not have a contract in place currently.
So you have extended?
I'm sorry?
You have extended or you haven't extended?
It has not extended yet.
And I'm not picking on you, sir. It's not, your issue to come before us. But we should, as a committee, do things the right way and vet things properly through subcommittee, through having school department folks be involved in the process. The interim Director of Transportation, Madam Superintendent, has she been aware of this process? And has she worked on this throughout the year, the validity of it, anything like that?
No, Mr. Pacheco is the one that has been involved in it.
How about yourself, have you been?
I did attend one virtual meeting that they, when they were starting the process.
So, any questions related to school department vetting it and stuff, there's nothing?
Are, are you asking me?
Yeah, I mean.
Was that a question?
Wasn't for you, sir.
So Ms. Agia, what we've, my contribution to this is to make sure that this agreement, this five-year agreement aligns with the procurement, the 2035, if I'm not mistaken, RFP 2035, which was a bid contract three and a half years ago. A five-year bid contract three and a half years ago. So this contract basically takes that language, which is the important piece of the contract, the language of what we're being provided, how we're being, how it's being provided. And this agreement is more on the electrification side of what the city is getting in return, more or less in, in that agreement. And to cover the next five years for the infrastructure investment. So there's a million dollars worth of infrastructure that'll be installed at the vendor's location. And part of the grant is that it's a five-year, a five-year deal. So in order to pull this off, we couldn't pull it off with a different company other than maybe Tremblay's that provides us service, except the vehicles that Tremblay uses is currently, I don't want to say not available, but have not been vetted enough that Tremblay's is willing to jump on board with electrification as of yet. So right now, Whaling is the only option for this. So I looked at the contract to be sure that we were doing, following that contract that was procured via 30B. And then the rest of it is, is part of the agreement that was negotiated with Whaling for the electrification cost. So let, there's part of, uh, part of this agreement is what Whaling will be paying the city for the buses.
So, the school department piece of this has not been much?
The school department piece has been the, making sure the contracts align. And obviously determining which vendor would be the best option for the city school department because of the service that's being provided. So it's the only option that we technically had with buying the buses that were going to be used for our special ed transportation. And the fact that we had a vendor that still had a year and a half left of a contract, currently has a year and left, a year and a half left of a contract. So we're looking for an extension on that contract. We couldn't do that with our other vendor because that work, that process has to be a 30B process. And we can't negotiate a contract until it's one year or less, uh, left in a current contract.
Yeah, so when we originally went out for the special ed, I, don't, didn't we do 30B for both and then we didn't have to?
The reason why we did it was because we were trying to get all of the work based on the one contractor. So the way, the, the way the procurement went, we were, we categorized the, the, the work which is never done before in any other contract. We took the work, we broke it into pieces, and then the vendor would bid on the particular piece of work. This, it so happens that this vendor bid on the majority of that and did not have another vendor that was even close on the dollars.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, and I'm not picking on the vendor.
No, no, I understand.
So when we went out for the original five-year bid with Whaling, that Whaling City received?
Yes.
Was that 30B or not?
Yes, it was.
Right.
It was.
When I said the no-bid contract piece, so we went out for three and a half years ago, or whatever it was, for a 30B contract and they won the bid?
Yes.
Now, we're not going out 30B, even though they had a year and a half still left on that particular contract. We're not going out to bid?
Because we need a spot to put the infrastructure in. So the buses can't be delivered to the award winner, the city, unless there's a place that the buses can be charged.
Yep.
That's part of the agreement. So there's no way that we can make an investment with a contractor without knowing for sure that they're going to have a five-year deal.
I understand. So, for months now, or probably over a year, as I've been coming before this committee and asking for updates on what's going on with this electric bus, we're going to have a say, we should have a say. I've been saying that for over a year now. Now it's middle of July where we're under pressure to say we have to do this now. Otherwise, we can't accept the money that the city already accepted. Because the city's signed contracts to do this with those, accept those grants without the approval of the school committee. Is that true or not true? But needing the school committee approval now, after the fact?
Needing a school committee approval for the bus contract, nothing to do with the electrification?
Correct. So if the school committee wasn't, if it was none of our business, as has been told, and we weren't going to be part of it, we apparently have to be part of it in order for this to come to fruition.
We need a contract in place, yes.
And that contract is therefore no bid?
That, that contract is.
Legally, legally no bid, but it's still no bid?
Yes.
That's the part that concerns me.
And the contract follows the bid contract.
Yep, no, I get it. So can you help to figure out what, for the year and a half left on the contract with that vendor, how much money they were going to make? And how much money it is now if we approve this? Like what is, what is the difference? We're not paying them the same amount that we were, we're reducing, we're reducing the amount that we're getting paid and then the city's going to pay that bill. What is that amount?
I, I, I'm not sure, Fritsch can, I don't have that number.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though? It's got to be. It's got to be less, right?
Yeah. The city will get a credit of twenty-five dollars per day per bus, for the electric bus.
Say that again?
The city will receive a credit on the transportation contract, the current contract, contract of twenty-five dollars per day per bus.
And how much money does that come out to, per year?
About two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars over the five years.
For five years?
Correct. Over five years.
So fifty thousand dollars per year?
Roughly.
How many buses, if I'm the vendor, how many buses am I not going to have to run in order to get this to work?
The contract takes ten old diesel buses out of service and replaces them with ten electric buses.
And for that, the city's going to get fifty thousand dollars a year, based on this agreement?
Twenty-five, twenty-five dollars per day per bus.
Which you just said was fifty thousand dollars per year?
Roughly.
So if I'm the vendor, I had done a bid based on a certain number, and I had to buy, how much does a bus cost?
Three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
One bus?
One electric bus.
No, a diesel bus.
Oh, roughly a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
So they're going to get a million dollars in buses that they no longer have to utilize over the cost of the five years?
Correct.
And we're going to get fifty thousand a year? The city's going to get fifty thousand a year?
Roughly.
Does anybody think that's a great idea? Or a good bang for your buck?
No.
Can you please elaborate?
Look at it this, look at it this way. The city is benefiting by replacing ten old diesel buses with electric buses at no cost to the city.
Were you the lead negotiator on this contract?
I'm sorry?
Were you the lead negotiator on this contract?
Yes.
So, when I just asked, do you think it's a good deal, you said no. But now you're telling us that you were the one that was the lead negotiator on this, to give us fifty grand, to give the city a fifty thousand dollar savings? And they're reducing ten buses?
Yes.
How do those things align? How do those two statements align?
They, they align from the standpoint that if it were a diesel bus, a new diesel bus, the cost of, the capital cost built into the cost per day per bus is approximately twenty-five dollars per day per bus. So for the contractor to be involved with electric buses, they're replacing their capital cost with the cost of the electric bus.
And you're telling me that number's twenty-five dollars a day? So there, whatever the amount is, per day, of the bus?
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying the capital of that is only twenty-five dollars?
Pretty close, right.
Don't we require that they have new buses?
I'm sorry?
Don't we require now that they have to keep updating their buses?
They can run buses for up to ten years on the contract.
And what are other vendors' capital costs for...
That's the capital cost for, for this type of a bus.
A diesel bus?
A diesel bus.
It cost the industry?
If it was a seventy-one passenger bus, the capital cost would be a little more.
Can you clarify again whether you think this is a good deal? How do you think this is a good deal?
I'm having, I'm having trouble understanding you.
Can you clarify again why you think this is a good deal?
It's a good deal because the...
Just because we're saving that a little bit?
The, it's a good deal for the city, primarily because the city gets to take advantage of current funding through the EPA and CEC for elimination of ten diesel buses running inner city at absolutely no cost. And, the EPA and the CEC grants are not designed for the city to make money, they're designed to improve the infrastructure, air quality of inner cities at no cost to the school, to the school district, or to the city. That's what it's designed for. It's not designed to help the districts. There's some incidental savings, which we'll see, primarily because the cost of electricity is less than the cost of diesel fuel. The city will see a benefit when they do the, the diesel annual fuel calculations, they'll see a benefit there. I can't judge you how much it'll be. There'll also be, in the future, less maintenance, because the maintenance on electric buses is less than the maintenance on school buses.
So are you implying that the city pays the diesel?
The, there's a...
Are you implying that the city pays with diesel?
There's a fuel escalator in the school contract, escalator de-escalator, with regard to the cost of fuel, benchmarked to July of 2020.
Okay. How much is it going to cost them for the electric?
I don't know what the cost of the electricity will be yet.
So when you said the capital cost is twenty-five dollars per day?
The, the estimate from, from EPA and the experience coming from the consultants for EPA are that the cost of electricity is substantially less than the cost of diesel fuel, mile for mile, hour for hour of operation.
Okay. So if you run the, if you're the vendor, there's a number that you say, how much is it per day for diesel fuel to run? Correct?
Correct.
What is that?
I don't know what that is.
Has that ever been asked when negotiations were going on with the city?
We could calculate, based on the mileage that every bus runs every day, what the, what the fuel usage is every day, but we, we didn't do that.
And it would come up with a number, right?
You'd come up with a number.
Yeah. Do you have those calculations?
No.
Have you ever asked those calculations?
No.
Does the city have those calculations?
No. Not that I know of.
How much is it projected to cost for electric, for the vendor?
I'm sorry?
For, to do it with electric, how much is it going to cost the vendor?
For electric?
Yeah.
It'll, it'll cost, the, the electric cost goes to the vendor, correct?
But, what does that cost?
And there'll be, and there'll be less of a fuel, a fuel cost.
Can you show us that analysis?
Actually, I can. I don't have it in what's given you, but National Grid did send us an analysis of what the fuel cost would, or what the electricity would cost, both demand and non-demand charges.
So, do you understand the point that I'm trying to make?
No, I don't.
Okay. So if the vendor is now using twenty-five dollars per day as the reason why they're only going to pay the city fifty thousand, if their fuel cost was higher under diesel, there's actually a savings. So when they bid the job back whenever, there's a number, how much you get per day, to calculate it. If that number is, let's say it was going to cost them for these ten buses, fifty thousand dollars, and the buses and out, the electric would be twenty-five, isn't that a number that should have been calculated to get more savings?
It gets calculated when you do your annual fuel escalation, de-escalation, because the amount of diesel fuel being used will be less, because they're using electricity in that particular year.
But in that same, in that same number, there's no, we didn't have electric buses. So they're going to be comparing it to something that didn't exist?
I'm not following you.
Is the vendor going to save more money on gas or electric? For the next five-year contract?
Mm-hmm.
Are they saving money?
I don't know whether they're saving money.
So you said that there was, the gas was more expensive than the electric?
Diesel is, diesel was more expensive.
And they bid a job based on gas, and you're telling me that for those ten buses, we never, we don't know what, and if there was going to be a savings that they're going to have, that should have been given to the city?
No, I'm not saying that.
So there will be a savings?
There will be savings to the city on fuel escalation, de-escalation, because the amount of diesel fuel used will be less.
The cost of the contract for the vendor is what I'm asking you. Is the vendor making more money on this than what you're giving to the city? What they're going to give to the city?
I, I do not know what, what Whaling City's profit margin is.
And you...
This year, this year or next year. All I know is that there are some inherent costs of running electric buses that are in excess of diesel buses, one of which is the insurance for a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar electric bus is significantly more than the insurance on a diesel bus. And therefore, that was included as a provision in the extension.
And it's a provision, where, where can I, where can I find that language? That we're going to pay it, or?
I misspoke. It, because the city self-operate, self-insured, there was no cost differential. But it was something that we discussed.
Madam Superintendent, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Being the CEO of the school department, do you think this is a good deal, and do you think that this was properly proposed, vetted by our people on the school side, to know the answers to some of these questions? And do you think that there's some concern that, with the information that was presented?
You know what, Mr. Agia, that's really not the issue here. The issue is the contract. And I've listened to you now for probably ten or fifteen minutes. And you know what word never came out of your mouth? Students. Not the lower, reducing the rate of asthma in our kids, not the noise pollution, not the effect of a grubby diesel vehicle sometimes running around kids in special needs, they're more predisposed to be affected by that. But all you've talked about is the process of the contract, and you don't talk about the fact that this is a grant from the EPA, which we're not paying for, and we're not going to gain a lot from it, but we're going to make the city cleaner, we're going to hopefully make the kids a little healthier, and we're going to move the debate down the road. We're in line for another fifteen. I hope that we have a similar process when we do that. But when I go voting for a contract like this, to put our students on an electric bus, the only person I'm voting for is the students. You get hung up on the process a lot of times with this stuff, and it's amazing to me that you don't see the benefit to our kids riding on a clean, quiet bus back and forth. You'd rather talk about who's going to make what, how did it go? This is in front of us, we can do it now, let's get the ball rolling. If you want to be on the one for the next fifteen, I have no problem. We're, we're already applying, and we're trying to move this debate. And if, if, as Mr. LaPree told you, we're lucky and fortunate as a community to get fifteen or twenty buses a year when they start mass-producing them, we're going to be right in line. And if the federal government's willing to help our kids to keep them in a more clean, quieter environment, I have no idea in the world why anyone would vote against that. And if all you're hung up on is process, you should give me a call, because we, we believe that this will help a lot of things, offering backup power sources, children's health, reduce the disproportionate burden that pollution puts on some of our underserved communities. One of the most underserved communities in the city is Columbia Street. If we can go and take two or three small steps to clean the air down there for a grant, when we're not paying for it, I have no idea why you would vote against that. To me, it's amazing. If the process is what hangs you up, you should talk to me about the process. My point is getting clean electric buses on the streets to move our children. Whatever else you're focused on in trying to trap this gentleman with question after question is not helping our kids. My point is, this is done for the children, you, you ask your questions on process, and you stay there all night long, and we'll listen, and we'll shake our heads and say, he's right, he's wrong, but that's not giving us a cleaner ride for the kids. You never, during that whole time you were talking, spoke about students. You talked about process. And you've never called me about process. So my point is, this is in front of us tonight, we have the opportunity to take some tentative first steps to get ourselves into this electric bus business. I think it's a good thing for the community, and I think it's a good thing for the kids.
So, once again, you come forth with what we call a red herring argument?
No.
Because what that means is, you take an issue, and you don't want to address the issue, so you divert it to be whatever else the narrative that you want. My question was very simple to the superintendent of schools, it had nothing to do with a question to you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like the superintendent to have an opportunity to answer my question.
She doesn't have to answer that question.
She can answer for herself. I asked her a question, she can answer it, that's all.
Mr. Agia, you can raise your voice, if that makes you sound better, go right ahead. She doesn't have to answer the question.
She can choose not to answer. Let her speak, please.
This, the point is, this is helping the children in Fall River, and you're hung up on process. You have not said one negative thing about our kids riding in an electric bus. These are free buses for the city of Fall River, with the potential for many more. I'm hoping that we can flip this whole fleet in ten years. Whatever your goal is, to try to disrupt this meeting by putting this gentleman on the hot spot, and raising your voice so people know you're angry when no one really looks at it that way, it's an issue to make kids safer and cleaner, health-wise. I don't know what the problem is, I'm lost.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to answer my question?
Could you ask it again, please?
So my question is, if you think that this process, on behalf of the school department, as the CEO, if you think that you and your people have been part of it enough to know whether this is vetted, whether it's appropriate with any of the questions that I asked, that we should feel safe in voting for this, relative to some of the questions I asked, and some of the lack of analysis that has been proven, that has happened here?
I think that the process, it doesn't fall under me. I do think Mr. Pacheco has been part of those discussions, weren't involved anything that had to do with our children in regards to the contract. As far as, I think it's a good idea, because it will help our kids, but I do think that there's information, there were good questions that were raised today, but I, I think that the process is determined by the city, because they're the ones who are proposing to flip the diesel buses into electric buses. We don't, we don't determine where a vendor purchases a new bus, whether it's diesel or electric, they don't, we don't have a say in that, as a school department.
So, when, when we talk about the finance for transportation, we've heard time and time again from the mayor, that the cost of transportation is too great, the cost of transportation is too great. My questions here, I think are very valid, and they're asking about how much money is the vendor going to save over the cost of the contract, to see if the actual amount in the contract is going to be reduced by an equivalent amount. Now, I think that's a valid question to be asked. And I think if the school department, who this contract is with, does not have those answers, I don't understand why we wouldn't ask those questions ahead of time, to know that if the vendor was going to save half a million dollars a year, the equivalent amount of money should be less than half a million dollars. Is that not a valid?
No, it's not valid. And let me explain why. The cost per day per bus includes a number of things other than the capital cost. Most of the cost per day per bus is tied up in salaries and wages for drivers, overhead, facilities, fuel, insurance, and other fixed costs. Those, all, all costs remain, regardless of the bus that's, that's being used. So her cost per day per bus, and Whaling City, does not get reduced, because it's an electric bus, because they're already giving away the twenty-five dollars per day for capital cost that would have been included if it were a diesel bus. So their cost is relatively neutral, given the extension of the agreement. They're not saving any additional money.
And you, that analysis is where?
I've just told you.
Right now? You've never given that analysis to Mr. Pacheco, who is in charge of transportation?
Mr. Pacheco's aware, aware of the, the analysis, and the discussions with Whaling City, through the, through the, the process of negotiating the extension for the agreement. I won't speak for him, he can speak for himself.
Mrs. Ponce, do you have a copy of that analysis? Because I've never seen it as a member of the school committee.
No, we have not shared that with you. I don't have one, so, no, I do not.
Mr. Pacheco?
Sure. So the conversation has been that, a couple of things. Number one, bringing electric buses into play is a good thing for the environment, but it is not a great thing for the operators. Sooner or later, they're going to have to replace these buses, because at some point, the biggest expense on an electric bus is the batteries. And then, when the batteries go, you're going to break, sitting in your yard, that you need to spend thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to get back going into an operating piece of equipment. So this whole process has not been, I don't want to say it hasn't been embraced by the bus companies, they're looking at, sooner or later, this was going to be something that was going to probably happen, kind of like the electrification of buildings, trying to get rid of fossil fuels in buildings, oil heating, gas heating. The same situation's happening with our vehicles. All of the incentives, so many vehicles now, electric-powered, our fleet in, in nutrition is already being electric. So what I'm saying is, is that the, the bus companies are going to get involved in this because they know they're going to have no choice, and eventually, this will be the only thing available, for the exact reasons why they're... starting this program now for cleaner air. As far as the analysis, I think that when it comes time to change these buses over after 10 years, whatever that life expectancy is, there's going to be an awful lot of money that is going to cost these bus companies to do that. We are going to get that cost then. We don't have that cost right now. There are 10 buses that are going to come off the road, 11 buses, whatever our exchange is, and they will not be used for our students. Those buses will have to be used as part of this agreement for 10 years, for five years. It was the agreement with the EPA and with CEC. As far as the analysis, I have not seen the analysis. I've seen what everyone else has seen. I've watched different podcasts from the different organizations, which is what we've seen in all of this. The Whaling City piece of this whole thing is a piece of property sitting in Westport, which is their terminal. And the process moves, in construction, the process moves very slow. However, of course, this process moved a little quicker than we had anticipated. And National Grid is a big part of that, and National Grid is absorbing a bunch of costs because they see this coming down the road as going to be something they need to get involved in with all of the bus companies. So they're ready to go, more or less. And that process is going to happen relatively quickly. The buses cannot be dropped off. They stay at a vendor until we have a charging station that those buses can come down to and be charged and be put into the fleet. That process is going to be a slower one as the buses get delivered to us over the next year. However, the process for the infrastructure is now. And, again, like I said, it moved quicker than we all anticipated. Those buses won't be ready for September, they won't be ready October, November, but at some point in the course of this year, their buses are going to be ready to roll. And the infrastructure has to be there, and Whaling is our only option to do that currently. From my standpoint, where I stand, where I sit in my job duties, and our transportation director-to-be did not have any involvement in this because, at the time, she wasn't our, she wasn't what she is today. So that's why she was not involved. However, moving forward, she will have involvement along with the management at Whaling to see where these buses are going to serve, what's the best routes for these buses time-wise, and how all of that's going to fall into place. Back to Mr. Agia's question, I don't have any analysis. I have what I've seen. And to be totally honest, at the end of all of this, I think the $25 a day piece is a token, an exchange, so to speak, when we have contracts and we say, for a dollar, we're going to do this. That's all it is. It's not going to be this extravagant amount of money, nor was it ever meant to be. The purpose is clean air and not any kind of the city recouping dollars. It was never meant to be that. On the other side of the coin, I do believe that Whaling and along with any other company that takes this on has some expenses. As Mr. LaPree said, the insurance is a big one, the cost of electricity, depending on when you're charging it, if you're going to hit peak hours, that's going to be an issue. That's on them, not on us. They're going to have to figure that piece out. I know the diesel, we've paid more for diesel for quite some time now, and that is an escalator that we pay. It's in the contract that as the diesel price goes up, we pay that extra. Pay the difference between where we started and where we are today. If Mary Solum goes down, a couple of times in my seven years, six and a half years here, it's gone down, not enough to make a difference. And when it goes up, it usually goes up a lot more than it ever went down. So we are paying an escalator for diesel, and that piece will be a different situation for us. And, again, all we have is what the utility companies have done for this. They all have people who sit on these committees for these funds, and they're all involved in what it's costing for peak hours, what it's costing for regular electricity, and they're coming up with the reason why this is the way we should be going. They're trying to put a financial or an economic spin on this, and not just a clean air. And that's why they're involved heavily in all of these podcasts and, obviously, in what Mr. LaPree has been putting together. And that opportunity for us to be in this 10-year money train, so to speak, and replacing a fleet of over 100 buses is doable. And it would never, ever be doable without these grants and without taking this risk.
So what else is in the contract that we should know about?
As far as, so there's nothing else in the contract. The agreement is basically spelling out all the electrification piece. There's also a portion in there that is talking about good faith effort on negotiations, which is what we would put in any contract that, you know, if this, if this whole thing happens to go haywire, that we will sit at the table and talk, you know, and talk out the situation. The bus company is giving up 10 buses, 10 buses that they bought and paid for. And in order to get an electric bus, they have to turn one in, sell it...
Or dispose of it.
Or dispose of it. They can't stay on the road. So they're losing equity, that equity that's already paid for, and they're gaining these electric buses. But there is a cost to what they're gaining. It's the old saying about, you know, nothing's free. These buses are going to them at no cost, but there is a lot of cost on their side with their mechanics, and we're all the infrastructure that they have to work on.
So what are we approving?
And because the city owns the buses and will continually own those buses for their life, as well as the infrastructure, the contractor loses the ability to depreciate them, which is a big savings to them on their cost. So they're losing the business depreciation because they will not own the buses. One of the things that Ken brought up was National Grid. We were informed today, we had applied to National Grid. As you know, we have to bring new service into the facility for electric buses. It's a 480-volt service that needs to come across the street. National Grid has, we applied to their EV make-ready program because the utilities have incentives from the federal government also to participate with school districts. And we were told earlier today that our application has gone from pending to make-ready, which means that we're now at a position where we can call National Grid and actually schedule this installation to be completed. But we did not want to do that until after the school committee meeting tonight.
Mr. Pacheco, so the contract that's what we're voting on?
So the, yeah, the...
Is it the whole contract or just for 10 buses?
It's, the contract is just the agreement. So it's the whole contract. It is the entire contract extension from what we currently have.
Yep. And how much more money is that costing?
The cost per day doesn't change.
Yeah, it's not changing. It's the, there is a, I'm sure there's a COLA built into the contract, as all our contracts do now.
And that analysis has been done to see how much that money that's going to cost?
Doesn't change.
It hasn't changed, right. So it's going to remain what it is, with the exception of...
But it's going to be 5% more every year, according to this?
As the current one was.
Right. So we're given a new contract, is my point, a total new contract, not just for the 10 buses.
No, it's a total, it's a total new contract to Whaling.
Five more years at 5% per year.
Yes.
What else is in here that we should know about before we vote? So we're extending it for five years?
Yes.
Is there other extensions?
Is there other extensions?
Are we really extending this for 10 years?
No, we're not. There's always, everyone is always looking for a five and five. So that's the new thing across the industry. We're issuing a five-year contract, there is no promise of another five.
Okay. And then, what happens after the five if we discontinue?
If, so, the issue would be whether or not the next contract, the next allotment of funds, as the mayor said, that the next round, and as Mr. LaPree said, the next round of buses will have its own, I'm sure, its own rules and regulations that go along with it. It is the same program, however, I'm sure that there are some issues that came up in this round that they're going to correct.
I'm just asking on behalf of the school committee.
I understand.
So, in this agreement that we're signing, not the part about new grants and more grants and any of that stuff, what would the cost be if we terminated this contract after five years?
There is, there is no...
Would be all right, correct?
We own the buses.
The cost, the cost would be to remove the infrastructure and remove the chargers and relocate them to whoever has the contract after five years.
And do you know how much that would cost?
I don't.
Is it short money or...?
It would be, it's five years from now, I have no idea what it would cost five years from now to remove.
But there's an amount, right?
To remove $782,000 worth of infrastructure and chargers.
And the $25 you said is a reduction in the daily rate?
The $25 per day per bus reduction in the current and future cost per day per bus.
Because it says in here...
So the cost per day per bus has, will not change, whether it's an electric bus or a diesel bus, with the exception that for the 10 electric buses, the city will receive a credit of $25 per day per bus.
Right.
The following year, if we're successful and we get an additional 15 buses, those 15 buses will generate a credit of $25 per day per bus.
To lease it from the city.
Going forward. And that's each, that's not just this year, that's each year that they're in operation.
To lease it is basically the language here.
So that goes over five years and possibly over 10 years, because the life of the bus is 10 years, the warranty on the batteries for the buses, which is the big concern, is for eight years.
I understand. I'm just asking the question on, in the contract, which is probably Mr. Pacheco, this is the contract that we're approving?
That's the agreement.
That's the agreement.
The agreement, and it says a lease cost of $25 a day. It doesn't show anywhere in here what the cost per day of the bus is.
Because it's referring back to the current contract.
It's in, it's, correct, it's in the current contract.
Right. The current contract...
We're not changing, we're not changing anything.
The current contract is the document that we're going to be operating under. This agreement allows us to extend the contract and put the electrification specifications to it.
I guess the point I'm just making is, the only thing that this school committee, I'm sitting here as an elected member of the school committee, this is the only document I have. This is the only document that I have. It says from the city of Fall River. I received nothing from the school department. No analysis, no new contract, no, nothing.
There is no new contract, though. There is no new contract. It's the exact same contract that was approved by this committee three years ago.
Analysis, a one-pager, like we do with everything else. That's my point, is this process stinks. It wasn't the right way to go about the process from the school department. I've said it all along. The mayor can change whatever he wants about a red herring argument. My comments here are based on what the school department was given, and we were given nothing. We were given nothing for the last year, including what you just admitted, Mr. Pacheco, and I appreciate your honesty. You don't have any analysis on this so far, and I appreciate your honesty. This is a tough spot for you to be in because the city got the grant, never came to the school department, and then now we're just getting it thrown on us. I appreciate your honesty. I'm not voting for it because of that reason, and with that, I yield.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a comment.
Hold on a second. Do I have a motion in a second, then you can talk.
I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Rogers.
Just a comment, not a question, but it feels like this is a very beleaguered conversation. We've been sitting here for like 40 minutes, talking about the process. It feels contentious, but it's really because we haven't had the opportunity to ask those questions earlier. And had we done that, then it wouldn't have felt this way in this particular meeting. So I'm just saying that I don't think anyone disagrees that this is the way things are going. It's not like we have a whole lot of a choice. But when we do ask for updates on what this looks like, to be told that we really don't have any say in it and then be asked to vote for something just feels like a, it feels disingenuous. I don't know that that's the word I'm looking for, but it doesn't feel...
If I could, I would offer to any member of the school committee, if you'd like to sit with me and look at the process and go through the process, I'd be happy to show you the site, show you the process. You know, everything that we've done through the city has been transparent. It's been through city purchasing to acquire the buses and acquire the chargers, was publicly bid under 30B, so that process all went through in February and March. And it took us a while to renegotiate the agreement with EPA to go from what was originally written was a series of big buses and small buses to 10 relatively large buses and get that approved. And that was just recently, recently approved. But as an afterthought, I would be happy to appear, you know, before the committee at your leisure, at your discretion, to update as we go forward with the process, and hopefully we go forward with the process.
And I have no doubt that you've been transparent with the city about what that process looks like. The point is that we didn't get that information. And so then to sort of come back almost a year later, being asked to vote on something that we really weren't privy to, yeah, there's going to be about 40 minutes' worth of questions because we didn't get a chance all along to ask those questions. And so it does feel contentious. It does feel like, oh my gosh, we're being attacked here. But again, had we known, had we had that opportunity, it wouldn't have looked like this. So I'm just pointing that out there, that, again, I don't think anyone is disagreeing that having an electric bus, that's better for the kids and better for the environment, sure. But, again, we are responsible for vetting things, right? And we can't do that unless we're provided with an opportunity to ask those questions. I can't ask questions if I know somebody, if I don't know somebody exists, right? I can't just randomly put questions out into the abyss. So with that, I yield.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to approve the five-year contract with Whaling City for the electric buses. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
I'm saying no right now.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up on the agenda is four-year information. We have a number of retirements...
Motion to accept.
Resignations and regretfully some death. I have a motion in a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Do we have any new business to come before the committee? Hearing none. Mr. Assad, do we have a request for executive session?
There would be, uh, mayor.
You want to read it?
Sure. National law chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve the executive session minutes for June 12, 2023, regular school committee meeting. National law chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrative Association as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River school system, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educated Association as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Sandra Silva, payroll manager Christine Abdo, pro-cumite specialist Deborah Cavalo, director of transportation Charisse Brooks, Robert L. Maderas, Resiliency Preparatory Academy. Principal, we would reconvene, there may and may not be statements at that time.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion, Deb.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Adjourned to executive... We're back from executive session. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Anything further to come before the committee?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
A motion to approve the executive session minutes for June 12, 2023, of the regular school committee meeting. Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Abstained, because I wasn't there.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Motion to approve Sandra Silva's contract as negotiated?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
A motion to approve Christine Abdo's contract as negotiated?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
And one more?
Mr. Hart?
Motion to approve Deborah Cavalo's contract as negotiated?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.